...of Monday, boy, October 5th. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "O Canada." (Music) 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 Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. Before we get started tonight, I just wanted to note two things for council and for the public. First off, we have some special guests in attendance at our meeting today. I'm pleased to welcome a number of members of the City of Grand Prairie's Cultural Integration Academy, who are here to observe a city council meeting. Welcome to you all, and we're so happy that you could join us. And then secondly, for council, just around procedure, we've had a request from councillor Clayton to dial into tonight's meeting electronically. That's for Agenda Item 7.1, our first piece of unfinished business. And so when we get to the adoption of the agenda, I'm going to ask maybe if we could move Item 7.1 to come immediately before the delegation business. That way, we can get councillor Clayton on using our relatively newly-approved ability to dial into meetings. So she will participate in the discussion and debate only on Item 7.1 when we call her into the meeting, so to speak. So with those two pieces of information passed on, I'd look for a motion to adopt the previous council meeting minutes. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm with the minutes the city council meeting held Monday, September 21st, 2015 be adopted.
Thanks very much, councillor McLean. Is there any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like those minutes accurately reflect what happened at the meeting? If those minutes are in order and correct, then I will call for a vote to adopt them. Thank you. That motion carries. And then I'd look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda, again, just with that one change in the order. Councillor Logan?
Thank you. I would move that we adopt the agenda as presented with the one exception, with one change.
Okay, thanks very much, councillor Logan, so that moving of unfinished business, Item 7.1, we'll move that just prior to Item Number 5. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? If that change is noted? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion is carried, so our agenda has been adopted. We've moved that item, and so I'll look to our administration team to welcome in councillor Clayton, who's going to be joining us by telephone. We'll just make sure that we have councillor Clayton on the line. This is the second time that we've used this ability. The first time was just this spring, so we're still getting used to doing it and working out the kinks. I'm sure there's none, I'm sure there's no kinks left in it, right? Councillor Rice?
Is she on the line yet?
Well, we should be able to hear her when she is. I'm just looking up to our admin team at the back there. I know that we did have councillor Clayton on the line just before we started "O Canada" and the rest of the meeting, so it'd be just a matter of conferencing her into the overall system. There's nothing like trying to work under pressure. (Music) 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 Now that we've...
Hello?
There we go, there's councillor Clayton. Councillor Clayton, do you hear us?
Good evening.
Hello, okay, it sounds like we've got you loud and clear, councillor Clayton. So we just finished the adoption of the agenda, and we moved Item 7.1, the one that you'd requested to be able to dial in for, up. So we're going to deal with that now.
Thank you.
Sorry, councillor Rice?
I move third reading of Bylaw C-1078D, an amendment to the Use of Public Lands Bylaw, being a development permit for a freestanding sign to be located at 11330106 Street.
Thanks very much, councillor Rice. Councillor Clayton, I'll just ask in the room first before I ask you, is there any discussion or debate on this item?
Can you have it on third reading?
Yes, we can. Any discussion or debate? Just as a, for the information of those that are watching, this is a sign approval, approval for a sign, new sign at Center 2000. The previous two readings took place at our last council meeting, and so this final reading was carried over here tonight. I don't see anybody ringing in with any questions or discussion here at the council table. Councillor Clayton, did you have any discussion or debate?
No, I am, I'm just glad to see this coming to, hopefully, will be a close for a great opportunity for the chamber.
Thanks very much, councillor Clayton. One last opportunity, any discussion or debate? Okay, again, seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote. Councillor Clayton, I'll call for the vote, and I will ask you to express your vote verbally after all the other council members have entered their votes. So I'll call for the vote now. Okay, and councillor Clayton, all the votes are entered. Can you tell us if you are in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Okay, thank you. And so that motion will carry with three in opposition and six in favor. Councillor Clayton, I think that was the one agenda item that you wanted to be able to dial in for tonight, so I think that would conclude our business. Thanks very much to our city administration, who made that happen in relatively short order. Thank you very much. Thanks very much, councillor Clayton.
Thank you so much.
Okay, there, now I think it's just us. Okay, so we'll go back to our, we'll go back to our agenda and the regular order of things, and this will bring us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting, and it's an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community matter. We had two delegations let us know ahead of time that they wanted to attend and present to city council, and so we'll ask them to come first. The first of those was Mr. Baron Mans with the Aqua Terra Utilities. Mr. Mans, if you'd like to join us at the table, it's not your first time here, so welcome.
Thank you and good evening. I just wanted to take a few minutes this evening and provide an update on what's going on with Aqua Terra. So if I can get this... (Music) So I just wanted to go over some of the things that we're doing to accommodate growth. Talking about capital projects that we have ongoing, some of the things that we're doing to grow the company in terms of the addition of new non-voting shareholders, industrial services, and large-scale industrial water treatment. Also touch on a director recruitment that's currently underway. Our capital plan for 2016 is just over $87 million, and it's the largest single year that we've had. And I'll just highlight some of the projects that are either underway or are part of that. With respect to wastewater, we're making space away from completion of a multi-year upgrade to our wastewater treatment plant. It's $60 million. We've relied about 25 years of projected regional growth capacity, as well as meeting projected environmental standards that would, the quality of the water that we bring back to the water. And so it'll be commissioned in the next few weeks. We have a new water treatment plant, some big deal to celebrate that. The next project that is also underway is a trunk sewer down 116th Street between Center West and O'Brien, to fill in the gap that exists there. And it'll provide long-term growth in the west end of the city for industrial and commercial development. It's part of a regional project application that was successful in attracting $10 million in "O Canada" funding. The city has committed to $4 million in investment to that. And so the project itself is just over $14 million, and is underway now. The other component to this...
Sorry, please? Just a second, councillor Rice. Make sure your microphone's on, go ahead.
I assume the green is the project area?
That's the, yes, the area that could drain directly into it. Now, there, over the long term, could be lands beyond that that would have to be pumped in, but that's the drainage basin for that trunk sewer.
So you're not going into the airport property? Kind of surrounding it?
Yeah, well, just because the landing strips themselves, I didn't think would be open for development, so... That's why that's white there. The, so the second component of this as a regional project would see the Claremont Lagoon being connected to this through a forest main. And as part of that project, there would be an extension to the trunk sewer within the city. So around 112th Avenue, we'd see an extension of the trunk sewer that would go up to about 120th Avenue. So create additional development within the city towards the north before the rest of the area.
Mr. Mans, just a question, Baron. So that extension from 112th Avenue north, so that portion is within city limits, does that also benefit the city properties that are there? Like would the city, because my understanding of the project is that the $4 million essentially brings the sewer trunk to about 100th...
Right.
100th Street or 100th Avenue? And so will the city properties north of 100th Avenue be able to connect with that 112th Avenue extension?
Yes, the trunk sewer exists north of 100th Avenue through the existing development, but this would take it beyond that to the crest of the hill that exists, and allow further development to the north to connect directly within the city.
And, so just to clarify, so will the city, will the city properties through which that line travels have the ability to connect to that line?
Yes, to the gravity portion of that trunk sewer extension, they would be able to connect directly to the gravity portion, yes. Another project that's underway is upgrading of the downtown infrastructure in coordination with the downtown enhancement plan. We identified that $2,600 for some upgrades there. And that'll be coordinated with the work that the city's doing on the street. It also presents an opportunity for investment by the city. When some of that infrastructure first went in, it was the 1930s, and downtown looked like that, and I'm not sure that they envisioned what it could look like today or what Grand Prairie might look like in another seven years from now. There's a potential for some significant intensified development, and so the question would be, well, what should be accommodating the infrastructure that's going down now for that future? So these projects, we identify a potential investment, talk about that. Another project is the relocation of the 92nd Avenue aerial sewer, a city landmark and a place where some young men have proven their manhood by riding their bikes across, apparently. So we'll be decommissioning that with the construction of a forest main that will relieve some of the loads in the downstream or so-and-so avenue. And it'll... The contract's been awarded, it's about $2.5 million. The actual deconstruction of the vessel will be deferred. Its flows will be at the ground with this project. At the wastewater treatment plant, we've got a number of tanks that digest the sludge. Those require rebuilding, and it's about $3 million budget for that. This is the really stinky part of our process, and so, and once that will be completed, the new upgrades have an enhanced water control component to it, so we should be lessening the likelihood of impact from residents coming in. With respect to water projects, again, the largest single one, the one that benefits the entire region system for water, and that's down at the river with some erosion protection, a new intake and raw water storage. It's just under $20 million. We've been monitoring the migration of the bank for a number of years, and it's eroding at about the rate of the water per foot per year. And so needs to be protected to protect the river facilities that exist there. As well, improving raw water storage will help settle out some of the silt before we have to clean it. And in the event of an emergency, give us some upstream storage. Ideally, a lot of those.
Sorry, councillor Rice, can you make sure that you're ringing in, please?
Pardon me?
My mic off. What, what happened to Spike 6, 7, and 8? Where did they go?
They disappeared over the years as the river eroded the bank there. So it's been something that we've been monitoring in terms of how fast it's been eating away at the bank there.
So it doesn't create a pollution problem or something?
No, they're just some pins that disappear and rust away eventually. There's also the water component to the downtown infrastructure, and again, a $2 million commitment there over the next few years. And also an opportunity to invest in some of the features and some of the redevelopment. We're currently in the process of building a new transmission line that would go from Highway 40 just by the college through the hospital lands and connect the airport pump station, so that it provides fire flows in the area and again, accommodating some of that industrial and commercial growth in the west end. Also at the water treatment plant, for the next couple of years, we'll install ultraviolet disinfection and improve the disinfection there without the use of chemicals. And it's going to be a project. On the solid waste side, also this fall, we'll be commissioning a bioreactor landfill gas-to-energy project. It allows to reduce power heat loss for the treatment plant operations, lower greenhouse gas emissions, and extend the landfill length. So that'll be running this fall as well. From a business development perspective, we started construction on the relocation of the bulk water station to the service center now, to just west of the new fire hall. So the customer service and remove some of the safety and conflicts that exist at its current location will facilitate that extension of patterned pipes across the railway. With respect to growing Aqua Terra, we look to increase services to other municipalities, services to industry, and also exploring large-scale industrial water treatment. So shareholders this summer approved the potential for new ongoing shareholders. We had discussions with the town of Grand Cash, where they're required to build a new water treatment plant next year. They could potentially see Aqua Terra investing with the town, that asset being transferred to Aqua Terra for shares. And so we're currently working through a great study of business case for that. There's a number of agreements that would need to be entered into, and then board with our shareholder agreement and then we'll have a nice fair agreement. So by the end of the year, we'll have some agreements there that we can go into. With respect to services to industry, we're about just over a year and a half into the acquisition of Watch One Rentals. They had it in 2014, as did most companies in the oil patch. They provide wastewater services directly to primarily work camps, both in this region as well as into northeast and the British Columbia. And so we're looking at potential additional acquisitions that would grow that area of business and extend our reach in terms of serving industry that way. This year for Watch One has been typical of other businesses where we've seen the margins shrink and receivables increase, so it's been a, well, still profitable. It's something that we can support and... With respect to large-scale industrial water, we're exploring really the potential for water reuse in the drilling and fracking area. There's a lot of water that's consumed in fracking process, and we're exploring whether there's processes that can be applied. We see that people did that in the reuse of water to replace the amount of fresh water that's used. We're doing that in the lives with water storage resources. We're exploring by, on our record, we're exploring, uses of exploring this large scale.
Mr. Mans, we had a couple of questions on that slide. Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was just looking at the treatment of drilling fluid and fracking flowback water. What's that process entail? It's kind of confusing. So for me, just right off the top of my head when I read that, are we treating the drilling fluid and then putting it back into the municipal water system? Or are we treating it, then giving it to them? And what type of consumption rate are we looking at in dealing with industrial fracking?
Well, the intent would be to take the water that comes back from either drilling or fracking and be able to treat it locally. And then to be able to take the water that's treated and supplement that with fresh water to be reused for either drilling or fracking. So it would displace fresh water, it would otherwise be used for those purposes, and overall reduce the amount of fresh water that's consumed. And so then it would create a waste stream or a sludge that would then also require disposal. And so it's to create more of a closed-loop system in that drilling and fracking process.
That's good to know. So with that sludge, how do we, what's the method that we take care of that or that Aqua Terra would be taking care of that? I'm assuming that's the flowback?
The flowback is from the fracking, and so once you separate out the solids from the water that can be reused, you'd have a sludge that would end up being disposed of potentially in an oilfield disposal facility, or depending on the concentration of the various constituents disposed of somewhere. Again, that treats oilfields or dispose in the oilfield waste.
So Aqua Terra is not looking at potentially taking care of this sludge, this frac fluid sludge, and treating or disposing of it themselves? Or is there potential in the future that Aqua Terra might look into that practice?
We're not initially looking at having that come to, say, our landfill for disposal. And so, not to say that at some point it may not make sense to look at some way of disposing that, but it's really the water side of it that we're looking to see.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Given. Mr. Mans, so just a question to ask you about, is this kind of going to be sort of like Dawson Creek? I know Shell went and hoots a bit for the water that's, you know, taken from waste and used for putting down the hole. Is this going to kind of be a method as well?
It's kind of complementary to that. Dawson Creek, the effluent from the Alaboons is treated and then used by, I think, Shell directly in their oil field, and so used in place, again, of raw water. And so that opportunity also exists where we could potentially sell some of our treated effluent and have that lesser-quality water used in place of fresh water again. So it's somewhat a complementary opportunity to the treatment of this flowback water and the use of it.
And councillor Rice?
Is this a Texas company?
It's an Alberta company.
What about gray water? Have we ever looked at incorporating gray water?
Well, I guess there's opportunities to recycle gray water within a building, and also the use of treated effluent, which I guess is a treated form of gray water or black water, again, could be used either for industry or potentially for irrigation, depending on what level it's treated.
Go ahead, Ms. Vance, I don't see anybody else.
So really, we have a current vacancy on our board. And so our process is, we have a nominating committee that we're advertising currently. And so we'll follow up the staff and create the list of candidates that would, the board would recommend to shareholders, certainly on the upper end of the list. And we're meeting potential candidates, if you may. So really, that's it for my update.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mans. There is still one left, at least, councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just maybe one or two questions. I noticed we got the $6 million Building Canada grant regional. Can you speak specifically where it's going to help and what area this is going to help pertain to the $6 million?
Sure. Again, that was submitted as a regional project, and so it includes the overall components of the trunk sewer that's currently under construction in the west end of the city, as well as a forest main connection from the Claremont Lagoon. So that's, the two components make up the regional project, and that $6 million would be applied to the total project. So some of it would benefit the component in the city, some of it would benefit the connection to the lagoon.
Would you say it's going to benefit the connection mostly to Claremont?
No, again, it's, we would see those grant monies being applied across both components of that project. So kind of a $3 million towards each.
Okay, because I'm just going to finish up, and I'm going to say that we're at AME, and we heard about competition is over by a certain minister, and we'll start working together more. I see that some of this is competing factors on the city and how it goes. We lost the city resident taxpayers. You can say it helped compete with here, but it's going to help to hook up the lagoon from Claremont that's overflowing from development that's helping, not the city. So I'm just going to be advised by council, if we ever see a Building Canada fund and then we speak regionally or small communities, the citizens never got it done. You're saying we did, but most of it's going to help to reduce the lagoon in the county. So that's all I have to say. If you want to speak to that, I know you're saying it's split, but city taxpayers aren't going to see much of this Building Canada fund. So for roads and stuff, that's...
Thanks, councillor McLean. And I think that that was an offer, if you wish to speak to it, and not necessarily a request. Mr. Vance, you're welcome to either address that. I do also see another question, though, in the queue too. So I'll let you think about that, and we'll go to councillor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Baron, just a question, not on anything you talked about, but I'm just curious about the old city water towers. Is that, are those still retained by Aqua Terra as one of their assets?
Yes, those two water towers are still active and in use. In fact, they form part of a reservoir, the largest component of which is underground. And so what used to be tennis courts at Crystal Lake Park is actually the roof of an underground reservoir. And so those two above-ground reservoirs still form part of that total reservoir system.
Thank you.
I don't see any other questions in the queue. So, Mr. Mans, unless there's anything that you wanted to add, thanks very much for attending.
Thanks for the opportunity to provide you with an update.
Absolutely, thank you very much. So this is still the delegation portion of the agenda. We did have another delegation that let us know ahead of time that they wish to attend tonight, and that's representatives from the QE2 Hospital Foundation. And I know that I see a few people that I recognize, maybe over there. So I'd just ask you to join us at the presenter's table, and as you take your seats, just introduce yourself for our recording secretary and for those watching. And welcome to you all, welcome.
Thank you for having us. Okay, sorry, we weren't quite entirely organized here, but I think we are now. Good evening, Mayor Given and council, thanks for having us. My name is Mark Michelishen, and I am the chair of the QE2 Hospital Foundation, soon to be the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital, which is something, obviously, we're very excited about. I wanted to just give you a little bit of insight in terms of who we are and how we operate. operate. And I think I'm going to leave the majority of the presentation to Cindy and she'll get into some more of the details. But the Grand Prairie, sorry, the QE2 Hospital Foundation is responsible, obviously, to steward and we're obviously responsible to manage donor funds. We consist of a 12-member board, all volunteer. Recently, we've also created a 20-member cabinet for our, why we're here today, for our capital campaign. And that 20-member cabinet is going to be referred to as Hour 20. And that's something that you're going to start hearing, the phrase, over this next few years as Hour 20. Hour 20 consisting of 20 business professionals, healthcare professionals, legal professionals. And our goal is to raise $20 million, obviously, all for this hospital. Our goal with the hospital campaign is to obviously enhance patient care through the purchase of equipment. This campaign obviously not only looks at our needs of today, but it also really addresses our future. It's obviously the largest non-for-profit capital campaign that the city has ever undertaken. And it's something that we're really proud and excited to be a part of, which is really why we're here today. And I guess further to that, I'll introduce you to Sean Sargent. He'll speak and then Cindy Park, our executive director, is going to come in as our closer.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. I'm here for a few reasons. As a longtime resident of Grand Prairie and taxpayer, I certainly would like to hope and suggest that the city supports projects that have the most impact, bang for the buck, if you will, to all the residents and businesses for that matter in Grand Prairie. I am on this group of 20 that Mark referred to to raise the $20 million as well. I'm still a trustee on the board and I've been involved one way or another with the hospital foundation over the last 15 years. So it's something that near and dear to me. On that note, myself and my family have also supported the hospital foundation financially quite significantly over the last few years and really believe that this going forward to enhance healthcare with a new hospital is very important. Just going to give you a little bit of history here for those who might not know. 16 short years ago, give or take a year maybe, there was no MRI at the hospital here. People had to go to Edmonton. And the hospital foundation took it on to raise the money that was needed for that MRI and bought it. It probably would have been another five years if we waited for the government, from the government to actually give us the money to build that, to bring it in, I should say. So if you can imagine the impact that had on Grand Prairie area as well. Our CT scanner was completely obsolete eight or nine years ago. Once again, we raised the money, the hospital foundation raised the money to replace it from a one-slice to a 64-slice CT scanner. So those are things that we just wouldn't have had had we not raised the money. And Cindy will get into it. It's about enhancing healthcare. This new hospital is going to be adequate. It's not going to have all the bells and whistles. It's not going to have all the accessories, the air conditioning, the power windows, the power locks, to put into automotive terms that people could understand. But it is the enhancements that we can make to it with this money we're raising that will in fact have the most impact on everybody. And there's, everybody in this room in the next 10 years is going to be impacted by this hospital or somebody close to them in one way or another. That can't be argued. So any enhances we make today or in the next three years, I should say, will have a big impact on everybody. So I just ask that you help out. All right, Cindy?
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Mark. My name is Cindy Park and I'm the executive director at the QE2 Hospital Foundation. I've been with the hospital foundation for four and a half years. And I just wanted to introduce one other person. This is Dawn Miller. She's our senior development officer that's right there with us. So what I wanted to do is firstly, thank you, Mayor Given and council for allowing us to be here today. We appreciate your time and certainly we decided to give you a presentation on why it is that this is important as opposed to the specifics of the campaign. The specifics of the campaign you have in front of you in your envelopes and certainly I can answer any questions. But we're actually not launching this campaign until November 14th, at which time will be our Festival Trees Gala. The reason we're here today is, of course, because of budgetary reasons. We want to make sure that we get a chance to speak to you before you go into next year's budgetary decision-making. Otherwise, we would end up waiting an additional year. So we do think it's important that you have the information that's current and that's now and that can help make a decision for the future. Just like we're asking you, this is what we're doing for our future as well. We're making decisions of the equipment and the needs of today, plus we're planning a for-the-future component in this campaign. So I'm just going to, a few areas that I want to speak about, and one is access to patient services. So like Mark and Sean had mentioned, our basic healthcare services are definitely provided by our tax dollars provincially. The services do exist within Alberta, it's just a matter of where. So the priority here and what we're doing for Grand Prairie residents and the entire region is what we can have here today and for our future. So I'm going to just go through a few different things like reduction of travel. We had a patient, actually, I met with a patient and their family and they had to travel to Edmonton for radiation, cancer radiation treatment. 17 seconds was all the radiation treatment was every day for six weeks, but they had to live there for six weeks. What that means to one person and to another person may be two different things. One is time, one is money, and one is the value of family and friends around people. So those are, some are monetary and some are not monetary type of benefits of having those types of things here. And those are, we are getting a cancer radiation treatment here, but there is other things that we can do to keep people here. I'm going to give you a couple of examples of things that we've done recently to put that into perspective about the type of equipment that we have. Just recently, we purchased a scope. It's only about that big. It's about $280,000. It's a very expensive piece of equipment. But what it does is it allows a specialist or a physician to go into a patient's lungs. And, you know, that is very exciting technology. It starts out when a patient has a blemish on their lung and they want to know what it is. This piece of equipment can go into a person's lung and determine size, shape, take biopsies, do ultrasounds and all kinds of treatments that, or to determine treatment that is needed right away. That procedure exists in Edmonton or Calgary and it also exists maybe six months down the road or a year. I actually spoke to someone today that said that she had hoped that piece of equipment was here years ago. She thinks that could have saved her mother's life. Another piece of equipment I want to talk about is children's MRI equipment. We just recently bought that. It's about $200,000 with the community's help. And children, we have an MRI, we've had an MRI for a long time now, but children under the age of nine typically didn't use it. The MRIs are loud and very scary for young children. So most children age nine and under end up going to Edmonton for MRIs. You think about the cost to a young family, the fact that people have to, mom or dad or both have to take time off work, there may be other children that need care, and the fact that there's a cost in hotel, food and travel. That is all on top of the fact that your child needs an MRI. That is stressful enough. So having that service here, one of our first patients was a little girl out of La Glass, five years old. She came, had the treatment, her mom was thrilled that she could have her daughter home within an hour. And, you know, all of the next steps were to follow, but that's just one thing in someone's life that can be a big deal. So saving lives are important. There's other things that are also important is the way we look at improving the experience. So another piece of equipment that we purchased, this one wasn't a lot of money, it was about $6,000, again, but it's not something that's here, it's in Edmonton and Calgary. It was a, what we call a BIS monitor. And when a patient goes under for a surgical procedure, they have the surgery, but there is patients out there that often don't know this until after, that they don't actually fall asleep during the surgical procedure. So they're, they may look asleep, but they know and are aware of everything that's going on, which is incredibly frightening. This small piece of equipment, which isn't necessary to do the surgery, will be able to diagnose or be able to let the physicians know that there is brain activity to a point where they know they're conscious. So, you know, I've given you a couple of examples of what these pieces of equipment are. They're not needed here. You can drive for them. You can go to Edmonton, you can go to Calgary, you can wait for the service or you can have it here. What we do is bring that equipment here into this region so that people don't have to travel. The wait times are reduced, the techniques that are available today can be used in this region. It doesn't only have to be in the urban regions. The other thing I want to touch on is access to professionals. Doctors spend a lot of time with patients and that's what they want to do. They don't want to spend the time fighting the system for getting adequate equipment or transferring people to other locations to get the diagnosis that is needed or the treatments that are needed. They want to be able to help their patients and they want to help them now. That's everybody, every physician that goes into that line of work is not there to go through red tape. They, the other thing about professionals is they spend nine to 14 years getting the education to become a specialist or a physician, GP or what have you. They want to be doing that work. They don't, again, don't want to be dealing with the red tape that goes with where the patients go and how do they get the treatment. This hospital is going to also be a teaching hospital. I'm sure most of you may know that already. And that is incredibly good news for us because the patient, or pardon me, the students that are going to be here will be working in this hospital. And with any luck at all, we're hoping that the college will be able to introduce other programs. Right now, the nursing program will be moved into the new location, but there is hope that there will be additional services or additional education components that are added to that. When it comes to access to professionals, what does that have to do with the foundation? Because that is also a provincial job that needs to get done. Well, a young professional physician can go anywhere they want. They can go anywhere across Canada, they can go anywhere where in the States. Why do we, why do we want them to come here and why would they come here? So I had the opportunity recently to sit with a physician that is, that is being looked at and he's considering coming to Grand Prairie. Normally, the hospital foundation wasn't part of those discussions, but now we are because they can see value that, you know, we can work with the community to get these physicians to come to this location. So, you know, one of the things that happens is, of course, they go through all of the services that are in the community today, what they're looking for tomorrow, and also, you know, what the community has. And that is incredibly important. This community provides a lifestyle as well as a new hospital. They come for, our physicians and our experts come for that reason. When these recruitment teams come together, they take these young professionals and they take them to the art gallery and they take them to the Eastlake Center and to the dinosaur museum. We want to make sure that these professionals stay here. And they are, this young man that I met, he was very impressed by our community. And so one of the things that he needed was some equipment. He's a surgical specialist in chronic pain management. We have a chronic pain management division here, but we do not have a chronic pain management specialist, which is a surgical procedure that he can do. There is four of these specialists in Ottawa and he is one of those four. He said to me that he doesn't get enough OR time, he wants to go somewhere that's going to give him more OR time and more access to patients. The equipment that he's looking for is roughly around $300,000. We said to him, well, you know, as long as it works with Alberta Health Services, the needs are here and all of those reasons that are Alberta Health Service guided, we will look at helping you get the equipment because we want you here. So if the only reason was that they couldn't come because of this equipment, we could lose them to somebody else. We just received information about a new urologist that's being recruited and trying to be recruited just a year and a half ago. A new urologist came to town. The hospital foundation, working with the community, gave $500,000 towards new equipment for a new urologist that came a year and a half ago. He would not have come here without that. And the equipment that we had, we did have a urology program, it's about 25 years old, and it was adequate for certain things. A lot of the procedures that are done were, had to be referred to Edmonton. By having this professional come here, all of those procedures stayed here and people are increasing in numbers from the entire region to use this specialist. And thus why we need a new one, another one already. So, you know, even though we may spend the money on one person coming, that can benefit additional professionals coming. The third thing I want to touch on is partnering and emphasis on thinking locally. Now, I know this is, everybody in this room for sure, this is our hospital and this is the hospital we use. But the one thing we look at the foundation is we are a regional hub. We service 250,000, so of course, we want to make sure that we have the best facility here to do that. We would not be getting the type of facility we have for 68,000 population. We are getting this facility because we service a bigger area and that other outlying areas come to us. So we benefit from that locally. And, you know, I'm going to bring this point up. We're not here to compete with other foundations or other health organizers, health, I guess, systems in the region. You know, in Beaver Lodge, for example, there's a new hospital or a new health facility that wants, that the community wants built. That's great, they can handle those services there. This is a regional hospital that handles additional services like surgical and ICU, ICU and all kinds of things. So we're not here to compete with anything, we're here to make the best regional hospital that we can. And again, Grand Prairie residents get the full benefit of that because it is located in the city. And the final point is we're looking for donations, you can see in your packages that I've presented to you, but I'm really hoping that you look at this as an investment. When you look at this as a donation, sometimes people think about it as, you know, it's here and it's gone, but that's not really what's happening. This is an investment in this city and it's an investment in this community. AHS covers all of the operating expenses and replacement equipment, but if we don't invest in bringing those services here, it may be 10 years, it may be 15 years, it may be even longer before we get them. And again, it's not that it's not available, it's just not available here. Contributions can be made in the package I gave you, the amount that we're asking for, those contributions can be made in up to 10 years, depending on what the choices of where the funds go. We are working with the county, we did a presentation for them today and we're doing one for the MD of Greenview next week, all for the same amount. There will be additional asks that we'll be doing region-wide, actually. We're happy to work with administration, we're happy to work with council. If you have questions, we want to make sure that we answer them. We don't want assumptions made on something that you may or may not know. We want to make sure we give you the answers to everything. And we just want to say that every person in this city and this region is going to benefit from this hospital and we hope that you will be on board to support us.
Thanks very much. Cindy, I see Councilor Rice?
Cindy, I, reading your pamphlet, I see here, and you've referenced it a couple times, that once the new ser-
Counselor, I was just keeping in mind, as Ms. Park mentioned, the campaign's going to be launched November 14th.
Yeah. Okay. It says that once the service is provided, once the equipment is bought, then Alberta Healthcare takes over and funds it and maintains it and staffs it. So I assume you have to, or what, what sort of guarantee do you have that, you know, if we buy this equipment, it won't be just sitting there while we're trying to get staff?
That's a really good question. And I'm going to go back to the MRI example that Sean mentioned. An MRI lasts 10 years. That's the lifespan of an MRI. It runs 24 hours, seven days a week. If you turn it off for any reason, it's a month to get it back up and $100,000 cost. So these kind of pieces of equipment are very specific, intricate and expensive. That particular MRI that was purchased by the community has already been replaced and the services still continue with the new equipment that was bought by Alberta Health Services- And, and the services still continue with the new equipment that was bought by Alberta Health Services. So, your question specifically is that, around what pieces of equipment. We work closely with Alberta Health Services to ensure that we purchase the equipment that is needed. If we bought a piece of equipment because we thought, "Oh, this will be good, and we'll make them have the service here," that doesn't work. We, we can't, we'd just be butting heads all the time. So essentially, we work with Alberta Health Services closely with, keeping in mind that if they're going to get it anyway, we aren't going to do it. So we are very, very specific on the, the services that we do provide. And again, once that's in, so with, with an approval that comes from the foundation, it does indicate that we would do not cover any operating or education. In some cases, sometimes we do. But any type of servicing and that sort of thing is Alberta Health, Alberta Health Services responsibility.
And to go further on that, Helen, once again, excellent question. And being on the board off and on for, for years, I will tell you that, with very much confidence, that the trustees take it very seriously. Once we know that the, we, that we need the equipment, that the proper people and docs have said, "We need the equipment. It's not going to be funded," then it is our due diligence to be sure that it will be maintained, that it will be used at that point. So, so there's a lot of due diligence on the trustees to make sure that they're, we are, we are comfortable that it will not just sit in the corner, as you said. There was a rumor that happened about 15 years ago with a certain bed. It was not true. But it, we, we looked into it to be sure that it was in fact being used. But just that kind of set us real about it, to be sure that we don't buy something that doesn't get used. So, excellent question. One thing that wasn't mentioned by Cindy is, out of this campaign for 20, for 20 million, none of it's going to operating. A lot of penny's going to operating costs. That's really-
Or administration.
Or administration. Administration operating, none, none of it is. So that's, that's important. That question might have come up.
Well, you never know. That might have been Counselor McLean's question, or it might be something else.
No, I, a couple of questions. One, I was just going to say, thanks for bringing up the youth. We heard a statistic recently nationwide of people over 65, there's more now going to be than 14 and under. And we know the city of Grand Prairie, there's more kids 4 and under than over 65. So it's kind of where our demographic are youth. So I was glad you brought it up. One question, just to NICU, we've asked the different questions. It's supposed to be new and improved because I'm seeing so many thousand births here a year. They're predicting at this hospital. Throw that out, but the NICU, and I have one more question.
Sure. The NICU that we do have is what we call a Level 2 ICU. And what that is, is in a regional hospital, it has to be at a certain level in order to keep newborns here that are in, in crisis. And, and I just want to make sure that people understand, an ICU is as critical as ICUs for adults. It is a very high, high acute care service that we provide in this hospital. The, the next level is tertiary care, which is like the U of A or the Royal Alex. So we won't be getting that. No, we are going to keep the, the Level 2 that we have, but we're increasing the, the beds so that, to, to handle the patients.
Will it enhance, like, if a lady's pregnant, the amount of time before she's shipped off to Royal Alex, U of A? Are we going to reduce it by that Level 2 from 32 weeks to 28? Is there any chance of that, or is it staying?
Well, I think, you know, I guess the wish is always, what you can do here, we'll do here. The problem with answering that specifically is, every patient is so different. And whatever the cause for having to, to maybe give birth earlier may be a reason where they can stay here, or maybe they can't stay here. So the Level 2 service will certainly remain. And the one thing, though, is technology, as it, as it improves, and we're able to bring that here, that helps us to do even more. So even though we may not change from a Level 2 to a tertiary care type of an ICU, the level of service and care can increase just because of equipment and education.
My final question. Thank you, Mayor Given. Cindy, you're looking at $20 million. So far, what I heard out of the three you're looking at, it's almost half. How much are you looking at from private industry and, yeah, and timeframe? Are you looking at this a year or two timeframe, and then you're looking at mostly government, municipal government money flowing through this? Because I'm hearing most of it's going to be over half by municipal.
Well, we're going to try. I mean, economic times are tough, as they are with the city. We are trying to close this campaign in five years. And the reason for that is, the hospital will be built by then. There is some opportunities to extend out certain payments past that, depending on which options are chosen in the campaign. But it is important that, and, and one of the things we look at is, not every donor can participate by writing a check. Some will participate by being part of the city and being a taxpayer. And some can be part of, of helping the hospital that is a, is a resident of, of the region. So, you know, it's perception. Everybody can help in certain ways. Some can, and we're certainly going to industry, and we have already. And we will be announcing some of those successes that we had at our Festival Trees Gala.
See, Counselor Tarrant.
Cindy, just, I'm trying to get a sense of scope with this $20 million will get us. Now, I understand you've given a few different projects, and I, you know, appreciate the background on that. How does that $20 million compare to what the AHS is going to be investing in, in new equipment and new hospital? Do you have any idea what the, the-
As I understand, it's nearly, the figure I heard was around $400 million. But that is not, that is the investment, not considering what we still have, right? So if you look at the value of that equipment, that is a value that's going to be at the new hospital as well. So there is a significant amount that's going in. Now, I'm not on the cap, or the build itself. So, you know, there's details that I'm not privy to, of course, but it is a significant amount. And this hospital will be equipped specifically, fully, with basic needs that we will, that we will have. So, $20 million does sound like a lot of money. We have it defined in four different components. One is for specific specialized equipment. One is a legacy fund, and that is the future piece that we think is really important to start considering is because if we don't start thinking today of what we need tomorrow, we're always going to be here at the table. So we have to become a little bit more self-sufficient and identify those needs. Every year, I get a binder, this thick of all the nice-to-haves that we could have in this community. So there isn't a shortage of equipment that we could get because technology changes so rapidly that it is amazing what, what, you know, will be here, what we talked about today and what will be here five years from now. The third component is around arts, and that is specifically around art sculptures, the gardens at the hospital, beautification of the hospital. And we're also looking at music therapy. The mental health of, of patients is an incredible, I guess, aspect that we don't touch that often. And so having those kind of things available for not only patients but families is, is important. And the fourth component, of course, is around education, which education is important everywhere.
I see Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Bill Given. Thanks for coming in for the presentation, guys. It's mighty brave of you to come into these doors and throw out seven figures at council.
Over time, over time.
Over time, over time. Now, I was going over all the packages here while you were talking, Cindy. And maybe I'll just share a little story here with you. Counsel can bear with me here for a second. I know a lot of this is talking about innovative technologies and new techniques and art healing, spiritual healing, and reaching out to people, really trying to, you know, go that extra mile for our patients and stuff like that. But I've been at hospitals from here all the way up to Winnipeg, Manitoba. And it seems like every time I go to a hospital, I look at the level of nutrition that is actually there in hospital food. And it's practically non-existent. Like, when my mom had cancer, for instance, and I went to the U of A hospital to spend time with her, she didn't eat for four days because she had, like, minute mashed potatoes and boiled meats and a whole bunch of garbage food that really is sapped of all of its nutritional content. Now, I got her back to health by putting juice into a little jar and feeding her 125 milliliters for every breakfast, lunch, and dinner for the next two weeks. They gave her, they gave her a small amount of time, which is like five weeks to get out of the hospital, which would take her over Christmas. She's out after 10 days of juice therapy, and she was actually eating again. So my question for you is, is it seems to be pretty constant throughout our entire Canadian healthcare system that when you go to hospital, it's the worst damn food you're ever going to eat. Now, as far as innovation goes and treating patients with the respect and the dignity that they deserve to be innovative in a culture that really isn't all that, and to improve the experience and the physical, mental, and emotional wellbeing of clients, the QE2 Foundation consider lobbying for nutritionists at our hospital and improving the quality of food that our patients actually receive in the hospital.
Okay. Well, that's a, a, a good question. It's a little difficult from a standpoint of what we do, but certainly that touches into operating, where we stay quite a bit out of. But we are the communicators on behalf of the community. So we are definitely there to take that information. And we, we actually do. We go back to our site administration and we say, "This is the feedback we're getting. We need some help in this, or we need some help in that." Food services is a, a very touchy subject. Many people may not like, or the food isn't great. There's different reasons for it based on health and what people can have. But another thing that will help with this new location that, that will be helpful that we don't have today is this, the model that the new hospital is going to be used is, is called Patient-Centered Care. So this is a 200-bed hospital. There, each patient will have a single room. And the Patient-Centered Care model invites family or someone that's related, close, or, you know, a close friend to stay with the patient. And, you know, at 8 o'clock, when you hear the buzzer and everybody has to leave, sometimes people will stay occasionally. But the idea is that people leave at 8 o'clock. That is not going to be the case any longer. A family member can stay in the hospital overnight with the patient. There will be a chair or a couch that will convert into a bed. And what happens with that is not just the fact that patients are more comfortable. And so this is starting to happen. It's not maybe in the food industry quite specifically, but it is starting to happen that family is getting involved more. And the reason for that is, patients do better when there's family around them. But second, secondly, communication is better. You know, what your mother would like is, is discussed, you know, with maybe someone that is a healthcare provider there or maybe from the food services, that can be much more open dialogue for those sorts of things. And, you know, and, and the other side of it is also from a budgetary reason. You know, when a patient is, is sick and they're afraid, and they keep hitting that buzzer because they need a nurse to come and check on them, or they just need someone around them, having a family member there just makes people feel better. And people heal better. They just heal better when it's family around and there's that communication. By, by doing that, though, the, the operational side is then that nurse doesn't have to keep running, right? Because, so there is a benefit both ways of introducing the expense of potentially putting in all of these, these pieces of furniture that turn into beds, for example. So, you know, Patient-Centered Care is very different than what we, what we're used to today, and it could potentially grow to something like that. But at, at the very least, you can be the advocate that is there for your, your, your loved one that's in the hospital. That was a long answer. Sorry.
Sorry, it was a fairly long question, too.
Choose a short question with a long story.
So I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I think, I think there aren't any other further questions. Thanks very much for the presentation today. And so we have your letter and request here, and we deal with all of our delegation business at the end of our agenda. And so we'll be dealing with that, taking action on this one way or another tonight, which could include forwarding it to budget.
Well, we hope so.
Thank you very much. So this is still the delegation portion of the agenda. I said at the outset that you didn't have to let us know that you're coming. And so if there's anybody else in the public that was here to address council tonight, I'd invite you to come up and, and let us know that you're here. I don't see anybody else making their way up. But this opportunity does exist at every regular city council meeting. And if there was somebody that was here that wished to speak to council, all it would take would be for them to move to the chair in the front and introduce themselves. Since I don't see anybody else coming forward, I'll close the delegation portion of our agenda, and we'll move on. We have no public hearings tonight, and we finished our item 7.1, which is our only piece of unfinished business. So we can jump ahead straight to item 8.1, the Southwest Area Structure Plan Amendment. And I will look for a brief introduction from administration.
Thank you, Mayor Given. This is a text amendment to the Southwest Area Structure Plan. And the purpose is to delete, to delete text that would allow site access at a location of 68th Avenue and 107th Street. So it would allow access to that site pending a development permit application. And administration recommends that first reading be given to bylaw C-1066-10, and that Monday, November 2nd, 2015, at 6:30 PM, and council chambers be established as the date, time, and location of the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Counselor Rice.
I'm ready to make the motion.
Please.
Okay, I'll move first reading of bylaw C-1066-10, an amendment to the Southwest Area Structure Plan.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. I'll call for the vote on first reading. We have no discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Rice?
I move Monday, November 2nd, 2015, at 6:30 PM, and council chambers be established as the date, time, and location of the public hearing.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. So this motion is to set the date of the public hearing. That enables an appropriate period for advertising, so the public can be aware of this, this potential change, and specifies what date people would attend the city council meeting if they wish to speak to this item. Is there any discussion as to the date, time, and location that are proposed? Again, I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. And this would take us to item 8.2, an amendment to the Procedure Bylaw. Now, we're going to have an introduction from administration on this one as well.
Thank you, Mayor Given. This is part of the process to amend the Procedure Bylaw to streamline the process of adopting, of considering public hearing bylaws. And administration recommends that bylaw C-962-T, being an amendment to the Procedure Bylaw, be given first reading.
Thanks very much. And just to clarify, the recommendation is just for first reading. So is this an item that has to come back at a subsequent council meeting? Is there a reason why we're not recommending a date as we did with the previous?
Thank you. This is a bylaw that doesn't require a public hearing under the Act, so it will be considered for second and third reading at the same time as the Land Use Bylaw on October 19th, which is the public hearing.
Thanks very much. Counselor Thiessen.
Ready to make a motion, if you're ready to have one.
Absolutely.
Sounds good. I move that council recommend bylaw C-962-T, being an amendment to the Procedures Bylaw, be given first reading.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. This isn't a public hearing, and so we can have discussion and debate on this one, I believe. Counselor Logan.
Thank you. Would it be possible to get a quick precis on the thrust of this bylaw?
Sure. I, I think the intent is to reduce the amount of time between first and second reading.
Specifically, this deletes the, the text within the Procedure Bylaw that says that council must set the date, time, and location of the public hearing. And that provides the opportunity for administration to bring a bylaw to council to be considered for three readings in one evening, if you, council unanimously consents to offer the third reading.
Counselor Logan, thanks for that question. Any other questions or discussion or debate? And I'll call for the vote on first reading. That motion carries. And that would take us into our committee business, starting with 9.1, the Pursuit of Excellence Committee Meeting that was held September 17th. Counselor McLean, I think that was your meeting?
I move, council, see the minutes for Pursuit of Excellence Committee Meeting held Thursday, September 17th, 2015.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Did everyone have a chance to read those minutes? Does it look like that reflected what happened at the meeting? And I don't see anybody ringing in or trying to catch my attention, so they must. I'll call for the vote to adopt those minutes. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean, anything you wanted to highlight from that meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple here. Sarah Caress was awarded $500 for travel funding for canoe polo, for Canadian canoe polo national championships in Quebec. It happened in July. As well, the Grand Prairie Piranhas Clinic Hosting Fund Application was granted up to a maximum $825 or $55 per student by the committee. And it was for a course in swimming that could lead to coaching or whichever. And also, Grand Prairie Skating Club Clinic Hosting Funding Application was awarded for $1,000 as well. And just a couple, the last one is that finally, the committee said, "We know the funds are depleting from the Winter Games, Canada Winter Games, I believe it was in '95." It could be, I don't think it was the summer, it was the winter. And we know within seven or eight years, the Pursuit of Excellence, the funds are going down. So direction was given by the committee to maybe approach the county and the MD of Greenview for a $10,000 ask per year for three years. And that'd be done here pretty soon. So, I'm, I'm, I might add another year or- year or two, depending what the county decides, or if they increase from 40,000 to 50,000, or the whole goal is to help with the funds to move a little further down the road.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor McLean. We'll go to the Community Growth Committee Meeting from September 22. And Counselor O'Toole, was that your meeting?
Yes, it was, Mayor Gibbon. I attended the first little bit, and then I had Counselor Thiessen take over. So I have, make motion that council receive the minutes of the Community Growth Committee held Tuesday, September 22, 2015.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Do they look correct? Okay, I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote to adopt them. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, I've got one motion, recommendation, the Mountview Social Housing Units. And I'll make the motion, and if I could get our Community Growth Committee Director to maybe highlight any questions that may be asked. So I move the council direct administration make lots 27, 28, 30 through 32, 34 through 38, 40, 43, block 14, plan 0325, 386, marketable.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. As council is likely aware, these are the social housing units, affordable housing units, that were in the Mountview area. They've been closed for some time now, a couple of years. And this action of making them marketable would allow the city to sell them out into the private sector. And the intent is that those funds would be in the city's account to be able to develop more affordable housing units to replace these ones. Open for discussion and debate. Counselor Rice?
Are we selling them as-is? Like, I understand they need a fair bit of work. So as-is?
I'll look to Mr. Miyagi, our Community Growth Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. They are being sold as-is. They've been appraised at a certain value, and they are recommended to go to RFP. So the city won't be investing any money at this stage into fixing the properties up.
RFP, are we not going to list them with the Real Estate Board or something like?
Mr. Miyagi, do you want to speak to the RFP process? We had a discussion about that at the committee meeting.
Through the chair, the, there is a motion by committee to have administration come back with an RFP process that actually clumps certain properties together. They're identified in the minutes in detail. And the option is to have a variety of proponents perhaps bid on those, given how they're clumped, or they could be a bid as a whole. So we will be coming back to committee with a bit more detail on the RFP process.
Counselor Rice, we had a discussion about that at the committee level. There was a desire that we'd heard from residents of ensuring that there was a uniform style of redevelopment. There's also the potential of somebody redeveloping the site as a whole, and also the consideration of wanting to ensure that we get the best return for the city by giving the highest price per unit. And so the committee asked administration to develop a request or proposal process that would take in those factors into consideration, rather than just sort of the highest offer with the least conditions. So the committee has to see that back and see what it would look like first, before approving actually utilizing that process. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. I wasn't at that committee meeting, but I was at previous ones for this direction. I've gone back and forth on this quite a bit, and the land is, I believe, really valuable where it's sitting. We hear different things about Aquitara. I'm not going to go nowhere there. It's on top, it's on top of a hill. I believe other things could be done. These are units that need a lot of extensive work. Putting it on the market, looking at it right now, I believe the timing is way off. And so my decision is going to go on that. But I know they're looking at certain units and everything, but I also know aluminum wiring, and going to copper, and renovations, and what you're going to get for it. And land's worth more than, anyway, speaking to it, that kind of question I got is, we're going to see back again at the committee, that what it might cost to, we might get for selling these lots. Basically, when we put them on, like, projection of value we're going to get?
I don't know about that. That's certainly information council could request. Would like to be an in-camera item, given that it would be sort of a part of the RFP process. But certainly before council approved issuing an RFP, that's information we could request. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion or debate? Don't see any, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries with one opposed. Counselor O'Toole, was that everything that came from that committee meeting?
We just had one development permit granted. It was a discretionary use addition to a motor vehicle wash facility, and automotive equipment repair and sales. And it met all the criteria, and it didn't take long to listen to the facts, information. The report from the development officer was very, very well done, and the agent was, or the consumer was very pleased with everything. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. That'd take us to Community Living from September 22. Sorry, Counselor Rice, I saw you in and out, and in and out again. Sorry, go ahead.
What happened to lots 29 and 39?
I can ask administration. I know our land manager isn't here. At least one of the lots is actually Sunrise House. And so I don't know if there are two lots that are taken up for that. But, so, yeah, I'm not sure about the numbering system there, but at least one of the sequential ones would be from Sunrise House. Certainly get that additional information for you, Counselor Rice.
Thank you.
Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. I would move council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee Meeting held Tuesday, September 22, 2015.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? I don't see anybody ringing in. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn? Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. Anything to highlight? Is there anything to highlight?
There's one item, and that was South Bear Creek Pavilion Upgrade. Committee did refer to budget, that project. And council will be asked to consider some upgrade, some increase to the budget for that project to, I guess, to include existing upgrades that are needed, upgrades to make it an all-year facility, and some additional upgrades, mainly in the area of irrigation for our three major diamonds on the east side. But that will come with some price points, and council can discuss what we want to go with.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. We'll move on to Community Safety Committee Meeting from September 29. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. I move council receive the minutes of Community Safety Committee Meeting held Tuesday, September 29, 2015.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. I'm going to council increase the engineering services contract RFP-18-552-15 to previously awarded Bear Show Associates Engineering Limited for the 2015 and 2016 road rehabilitation overlay and road resurfacing and crack repair programs in the amount of $879,181.57, excluding GST, by $163,230, for a new total contract price of $1,042,411.57, excluding GST.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the motion? It was mentioned at the committee meeting that this is actually a result of the city getting quite good pricing on the capital costs. And so we were able to actually do complete more work this year, which entailed more engineering services than was originally planned for. And so that's why this increased. So this is actually a positive development. We were able to do more work than we had expected. Any discussion or debate? And just to clarify, I don't believe that this is new money. This is just an increased allotment to this project. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. Counselor McLean, we've got some of the worst news on our council agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. I move that council extend tender T-58-546-14 to Volk Highway Salt awarded to NSC Minerals Limited in the amount of $269,535, excluding GST, for a second year, being in the lowest bid, meeting city specs. And just to speak to it quickly, we all know what the salt's going to be used for. It's not going to be for the table. And I believe we only had one bid. You know, guys, certain companies go in a certain way, and we had one bid. It was all for RFP. So this is the price we got to help our roads throughout the winter.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Rice?
Did we not do an experiment the last couple of years where we cut down on the amount of salt because we used more crushed product?
I'd love to our Community Safety Director, Mr. Galante.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. Even we're testing different chemicals, like calcium chloride, pre-wetting the aggregates. So we're still testing a few new products in this season as well. But that's correct. So the amount of salt in the contract is still the same, but we're testing different products to make the operations more efficient.
Thank you. Thanks, Director Galante. Any other discussion or debate? Questions or comments on that motion? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. I think this was the second year, and this contract could be, I guess, extended for a second year, and that's what we're choosing to do, because it was, worked with our budget, and we knew the quality of the contractor. But I just wanted to comment on the bad news that was referenced by Mayor Gibbon, was that probably winter is a-coming. Hence the need for the salt.
Buying salt for the roads, that means there's ice coming. Counselor Thiessen?
It might muddy the waters a bit, but maybe to ease everybody's snow burden over here, the city of Grand Prairie is currently advertising for contractors who want to do private snow removal and have equipment. And the call to register is coming up right away, so please check on citygp.com if you're looking at home and if you have the equipment.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Anyone else? Discussion or debate? See any, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Thank you. That motion carries. And just before we get to Corporate Services Committee Meeting, our city manager passed me a note. Counselor Rice, answer your question about the lots in Mountview. So one, lot 29, is where Sunrise House is, and 39 to 33 are PULs. So thanks very much to the city manager for finding that, saving anybody else from having to dig it up later on. We move to the Corporate Services. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. Just a couple things we did have on the agenda about urban chickens. Status quo is going to stay the same, but there's quite a people more interested in what is realized, so I don't see this going away when other big cities, Halifax, and I've implemented it and ready.
You can't give an opinion as a committee reporter.
I'm just, okay, maybe that's wrong, but I can see, I said individuals are going to come back. Another one is, what I really liked was that is direct administration to bring back report for options, and associate costs developed a systematic approach for implementation of Grand Prairie crosswalks. Heard in tonight about youth, and how young we are in the city of Grand Prairie. And I believe this is going to be wide open for interpretation by council to look at what we're looking at, and how crosswalks are going to come together with mobility issues and within our city, because some areas of crosswalks in our city, you don't even know they're crosswalks. I look forward to this.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. That will take us to the Corporate Services Committee and Counselor Logan, the meeting from September 29.
Thank you. I'd move that council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee Meeting of September 29.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Logan?
One item of business from those minutes for council is the question of the skills and competencies matrix for boards and committees. And I'd like to move that council approve the establishment and use of a skills and competencies matrix for all council appointments to boards and committees.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Open for discussion and debate. Counselor Rice?
I will support the motion, but it's with a little bit of reluctance. These are subjective when you fill them out. And so, you know, council needs to recognize this isn't the end-all and be-all. It does move the process forward a little more efficiency, but certainly it isn't the answer to all your questions.
Yeah, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. That was certainly part of the discussion at the committee. And you know, one thing I'll say is, just to clarify, these are for all public member appointments to committees. There still are no, not necessarily any skills or competencies related to council member appointments. Any other discussion or debate? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Logan, anything else you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes? Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. I think that handles all of our committee business. We had, oh, Counselor Rice?
Moving on to delegation business.
Sure, well, I'll be right there, and I'll recognize you. So we have no items of correspondence. That would take us to responding to our delegation business. The first was the presentation by Aquitara on their initiatives and some updates.
I move to receive the Aquitara initiatives and update the presentation for information.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carried. And our other delegation, of course, was the QE2 Hospital Foundation and their letter of request. I would look for a motion on that, either to receive for information, or potentially to likely forward to budget for discussion and deliberation. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. I move forward QE2 Foundation delegation for receive for information.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor McLean. So a motion to receive for information wouldn't direct it to the budget for discussion or debate. So open for discussion and debate on that motion. Counselor Rice?
I would urge council to defeat this motion. I believe that we owe them the courtesy of forwarding it to the budget where we can have a full and fair discussion with it in light of the whole picture of our other asks. So I urge you to vote against this.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry, so I would, I see Counselor O'Toole in the queue.
Mayor Gibbon, I'd like to make a motion to forward this to the 2015 budget deliberations, 2016, in 2015.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. So a motion of referral to budget, open for discussion and debate again. Counselor Logan?
Yes, I wonder if it would be more appropriate to refer to administration at this point to do some background digging and get the amount of information that we need before we just go into a meeting.
Well, I leave that to council. Certainly, we have a package presented. I'll leave that to council to decide what their wish is.
A lot of money.
Certainly is. It certainly is. $3.5 million is the request. So open for discussion and debate. The motion is to refer to budget. Certainly, there have been times where items that have come to budget come with additional detail or information. I'll leave it to council. Any further discussion or debate on Counselor O'Toole's motion? Seeing one, Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill Gibbon. I think I'm kind of in agreeance with Counselor Logan. You know, it would be nice to get all the full information back behind this. It's a big ask, and I'd like to see what administration, the QE2 Foundation can put together so that we're making the most educated decisions when we're spending our taxpayers' dollars. So I will not vote for this either.
So just to clarify, the motion isn't to approve anything, other than sending it to the budget? Okay. Sorry, Mr. City Manager, did you have a suggestion?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. You can actually do both motions. You can do the one to refer it, and also the direct administration to provide more information.
There you go. Thank you. Counselor Rice? Counselor Rice.
It seems to me they'll be given the opportunity, the foundation will be given the opportunity to do a presentation to budget. And obviously, this park is here, she's heard we want more information. She would be wise, should this motion pass, to bring it to budget. I don't see that this is the work of our administration, this is the work of the foundation to have puffed up their package or whatever you call it, whatever the correct terminology is. And so, I think that's the normal process.
Well, and I think absolutely either is possible, you know. Obviously, for administration to contact the foundation and ask some additional, if there's questions related to what form that contribution might take or terms or anything. But typically, in our budget reviews, we don't, we're trying as much as possible to avoid lengthy public presentations. So, I think getting additional information is a useful step, absolutely. Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Counselor Rice, Mayor Given. I think that the presenter will probably supply us with information. I think that's, I'm not gonna say the word no-brainer, but I'm thinking if they're asking for that kind of money, they're gonna do their best to make sure that that information is to us. They've already brought us a package to browse through. They're going to have an official ask in the middle of November, I think, correct? And I'm sure that more information will be out at that time.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Any further discussion or debate? Obviously, we heard the city manager's suggestion that we could have a follow-up motion to this one as well. I don't see anybody else ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. This is on the motion to refer to the budgets. That motion carries. Somebody care to make a follow-up motion? Is there still a desire to do that? Counselor Logan.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion suggested by our city manager and his wisdom for the process here. I think that that's what the way we should have gone in the first place, it's sort of trying to push the wagon up the hill by pulling on the spokes at the front. That just doesn't make sense, but let's get the information so we can assess it properly.
So, a motion to direct administration contact the community, sorry, excuse me, the Hospital Foundation for further information around their request. Sure, okay. Sorry, council, just clarified, are you meaning pre-meetings of council with the foundation?
Whatever it might be, council committee, we may have pre-meetings that help us get the information that we want, want to make sure that we get. Snowmuckles, any doors on getting access.
Your intent is that it's abroad. Okay, absolutely. Anybody else wish to discuss or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I think that handles all of our delegation business. We had no notices of motion tonight, so that'll take us to reports from council members on external agencies, boards, and commissions. The first is Counselor O'Toole with an update from the Combative Sports Commission. Counselor O'Toole.
Yes, it's Fight Night next, this Friday. We have seven events, or seven votes at the Tech Center, Entrec Center at the County of Grand Prairie on October ninth. It'll start at seven o'clock PM. There are athletes coming from Southern Alberta, all over BC, as well as one opponent coming from Toronto. There will be a bout with just ladies fighting, which may be something that people might want to see. And there's three title fights, so. Heads up. And I will have to put the word out that we are looking for people to be on the board of the Combative Sports Commission. And if you're interested in that sort of thing, on the website, please apply.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. The next is the Downtown Association, the BRZ. Counselor Redburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple of highlights from our board meeting of September thirtieth. Mr. Galavan, city staff, presented an overview of the infill and facade improvement strategies that came to council committee growth committee for their comment, for Downtown Association's comment. And a couple announcements of ISL coming to our strategic priorities committee of downtown and the downtown board to discuss the downtown enhancement project and communications thereof. And ATCO, actually, will be coming to a committee meeting or end or board meeting at some point too, to talk about streetlight alternatives. And Helen also shared with the board that we have six promotions to happen downtown between now and the year-end. So, the downtown will be a busy and active place and it will be provided with other reasons to come downtown in the next few months. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Redburn. Counselor Redburn, you also had Grand Spirit Foundation.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Grand Spirit Management Committee meeting of October second. The Friends of the Foundation Annual Harvest Dinner Auction gained twenty-two thousand dollars, so we're very excited about that project. We had the results of our external health and safety audit was completed in May. Our final score was ninety-six percent and the audit improvement plan will follow. And we decided upon the name of Lakeview for our new lodge and villas facility in Claremont.
Thank you. And finally, we had.
Peace Library System.
Counselor O'Toole.
Thanks, Mayor Given. On September nineteenth, we had a board meeting in Peace River. There was thirty-seven municipalities and one METI settlement mentioned as board members, not all attended this meeting. I can tell you that we did have a review of the Peace Library System strategic planning process. We had a great discussion, we had a number of libraries put input in, including board members, managers, and councils. And we'll be implementing this plan of service through the twenty-sixteen, twenty-eighteen period. There was a letter being written up to Deputy Minister of Municipal Affairs concerning population counts on METI settlement. There seemed to be some inaccuracies and we just kind of wanted to know why that would be. Also, we had some long service awards that were presented to, and one was to Linda Alabaski of County of Northern Lakes and Raoul Johnson from the MD of Smoky River for five years of service and to Brock Smith from the County of Grand Prairie for twenty years of service. Technical Services Manager reported that the cataloging of materials in the library is completely set up and up to date. And Consulting Service Manager reported that thirty-five member libraries participated in the TD Summer Reading Club and are currently submitted usage statistics. Just to give you an idea on where the Peace Library sits for population, there's a hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-four-hundred people served, contracting to fifty schools. And the member public libraries is forty-five, so pretty active. Thank you very much for that.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Now, we'll start council member roundtable. This is an opportunity for council members to share some of the non-meeting-related events and functions that they've attended on behalf of the city. And we'll start with Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll try to make it short to my best ability. A few councillors attended the AUMA conference. What I heard of quite a bit at this conference, for me, for my fifth one, was it was the most open and breath of fresh air. Even hard-nosed conservatives were quite excited about how they're received by their cities and towns of the more openness and looking out to the future. And I want to thank Counselor Rice, being the president last two years and working very hard and diligently for towns and cities and for the future. So, I'll move on. Another one I went to was just Roots and Ruts, it's their fifth year of trail run in South Bear Park. Started with under a hundred, they had over four hundred that evening. So, quite a bit of people out there and going about it. So, a couple things I gotta speak to of, for safety, community safety. I had a transportation review, just getting out there with Robert Carroll. One thing I'd bring out is they have a twenty-five-thousand-square-foot garage area and you think about the winter minus thirty where graders are and water trucks and everything like that. In the evenings, when they got most of their vehicles in there, it's full. You think of twenty-five-thousand square feet, it's full now. And the other one I speak to of transportation was waste in concrete and asphalt are accepted at the Marshall Yard crushing, which we do in the city. And the material is brought to different areas for capital and throughout maintenance progress within the city. So, we utilize that material from concrete and break it up in the city. Another one I want to speak to, I was at enforcement ride-along with Swan Haven School. You might have read in the paper about a lady doing seventy-two kilometers an hour in the school zone. I was there for that. And I can tell you that one of the individuals, I was with Joe and Jeremy, peace officer in RCMP Alex, and one of the, one of the comments there was, don't you have anything else better to do in your time? To the peace officer. So, if you're doing so many kilometers above the speed zone in the school zone, I think that wasn't a very good comment and I'm glad they're getting a good ticket. Another one I went to was the CIA Cultural Integrated Academy. We got a few of the individuals here tonight. I believe it's almost doubled in the previous class of ten, there's almost twenty. I want to thank Solomon, I want to thank Angelina for all their hard work and letting me come in on their first class. It was a learning process and thank you for coming to our beautiful city. I greatly appreciate it, we greatly appreciate it, council and the mayor. And finally, I'm gonna go to the firefighting. I was at dispatch to Mayor Gadberry, Kerry McCollag, and Holly Biggs. I got to sit in on some of the stuff and on one of the conversations, I was, there was three of them working one phone call. So, I was glad when the firefighters came to pull me out to go into the bay because it was very busy and hectic. They worked very hard there. And so, when I was speaking to the firefighters, Bart Johnson, platoon chief, Jamie LeBlanc, captain, Phil Roy, Jeremy Fabin, Chris Baker, and Chris, I can't remember the last name who was there. And basically, I got to see the C-one ladder platform that this council a couple of years ago pointed for them to work off. I don't know if you remember, but when houses are built so close, we had four house fire in a row up on top of Crystal Lake Park School where two were destroyed and two were really damaged. That facility was used to stop it from burning the whole block and helped prevent it from burning more. So, it's a good platform to work off for the firemen, it's safer and for communication. And just bringing up one last thing, I know we had a meeting with CN Tower about, you know, loads going through the city and they work with dispatch. But right now, there's a disconnect and Orasho knows this about what's gonna happen and hopefully, we can find out the coming and going of the trains. We do know there's a part of our city that's divided from the train tracks. So, if we know of a train that's coming in at six o'clock at night, maybe they can convert and go through another way. Right now, they're catching some of our services at the wrong times and they don't know when they're coming. So, the coordination between CN and our city of dispatch isn't there yet and it needs to come forward quickly and move down the road and Orasho knows all about this. That's everything, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor McLean. Then we'll go to Counselor Logan.
And the standing committees had two things that were kind of special. One was the meeting of the reconstituted Airport Commission with its new chairman Fletcher Bootle, who did a superb job of setting expectation and ground rules for how the commission should operate and got acquiescence to all of that from the board, very positive. I think it's going to move forward very well under Fletcher's guidance, but also with the other members that joined the board. The other thing that I'll mention, not usually mention, but had two rounds with the Development Appeal Board in the last while and they were obviously, it was obviously a very difficult issue because it did come back twice and the board had real difficulty wrestling with it. But I did want to mention it because I can't remember really the last time I heard it mentioned at council meeting that Development Appeal Board is actually a way you can go with if you've got certain types of interactions with the city. So, just those two items, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Logan. Counselor Thiessen.
There we go. Mic is working now. I just wanted to highlight three items of my past two weeks. First one is back on September thirtieth, Counselor Clayton and myself, as well as other mayors, rees, and councillors from around the county, had a tour of the G-Prep Emergency Operations Center. We actually got to see all of our city staff and volunteers in the command center in action. Not only did we get a debriefing as to what would happen in a state of emergency, but we also got to see the command center in full operations with like mock drills of a C-in rail spill, as Counselor McLean was talking about earlier, and other stuff like that. So, it was really good to see and it gives me a lot of confidence as a councillor that not only do we have a plan that we've all been debriefed on, but to see it in action is quite impressive. In fact, it's quite coordinated and I can only hope that if ever, if ever we had an emergency such as that, that it would run as efficiently as it appeared to in that room that day. On September twenty-sixth, I had the opportunity to see how cool Kevin O'Toole was at the Amber Ball down at the Entrec Center. It was an excellent event. He was rocking up front with Colin James and if you've seen some of the Facebook pictures, it was pretty awesome. But I want to say kudos to the county for putting on quite a good show. I don't think I've two-stepped so much in my life ever and it was truly an honor to be a part of that event one more time. And finally, AUMA. I have to, I have to talk about it because it was a very impressive event. I think in total, we all had a chance to network and talk to many MLAs and ministers and party leaders across the board. It was truly great, especially as a lobby opportunity for our city and for other municipalities around the province. For ours, ours in particular, at least for my portfolio, getting to talk with Darcy Beach, with Alberta Environment and Parks about the watershed and what they're doing on the Montenay-Duvernay project down there and urging that they look into the wetlands park portion of that project. It was really good. Also, talking with Liberal Leader Dr. David Swan was really good as he's currently undergoing the mental health review. So, speaking on behalf of the IAC and municipalities everywhere, that there is a need for funding for infrastructure, dollars for housing, as well as program supports. I urged him and had the opportunity to talk with him at the conference and at least express those sentiments as we're going across the province, that he would include that in his recommendations to our new government. And yeah, the other meetings and the networking opportunities are always outstanding at AUMA and I was really, I felt really privileged to be there, to be able to go and, you know, to hang out with all the guys and girls there as part of my team, made me really proud, so thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Rice.
Yeah, I guess I'll just touch on a couple of things from the AUMA convention. I guess for me, the highlight was number one, and the premier giving her speech who referenced, "In your submission to the provincial budget, you said and drew out the letter that we had written and thought, oh my, she actually read it and was paying attention to it." So, it gave me a lot of confidence for the budget coming up. And the second was the commitment by the Minister of Municipal Affairs with a timeline for the Municipal Government Act review that when he plans on having it wrapped up in the process. So, I think those were significant steps forward as was, I guess, we have to say thank you to the provincial government for some more funding for FCSS, which we had asked for, as well as, well, there might be some confusion about their future intent on the grants in lieu of taxes on seniors housing. Certainly, there was no change this year, so those were, I think, four significant things that we can be thankful for.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Been a pretty busy couple of weeks once again. I want to bring up the AUMA. I've been to a number of them over the years and this one seemed to be the top of all of them, just because the amount of politicians that were there and the provincial side. Also, the work sessions that were there were the great topics. One that I really wanted to go to see, it was so full that the fire marshal kind of said, "You can't be in here, it's too many people." So, that's a good plus, it was a good topic. Also, the museum, the Philip J. Curry Museum had its official grand opening and VIP reception last Friday night. And also, the Amber Ball was on the Saturday, which was said, great entertainment, great, great amount of tables sold once again. And this last Saturday, I attended the Chair Extraordinaire, which is a fundraising event put on by the Self-Piece or Suicide Prevention Resource Center. I gotta tell you, I've been an advocate of this for a number of years. I'm a personal sponsor of some of the stuff and it just blows me away, the silent auction items were up this year, the... The silent auction items were up this year, the number of chairs was 18 this year, and they went for unbelievable prices. There's a really feeling in the community that we need to look after. There are people that are in this situation, so it was a great event. Just talking about Darcy Beach, I met him in Calgary at the AUMA, and he said, "I'm going to call you in a couple of weeks, maybe we can go to the museum." So he called me yesterday, and we're going to the museum tomorrow, so there you go. He's bringing a number of his people. He said, "We look after the present and the past, and now we're looking after the future." So I want to see what we got here. So those were his words.
Cool. Thanks very much. Counselor Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll echo the sentiments of several other colleagues in terms of AUMA and what a fantastic conference it was. I really appreciated the opportunity to meet with the new government and a lot of the MLAs and to mingle and to advocate on behalf of Grand Prairie and our priorities. I also really appreciated some of the words that were spoken by the Municipal Affairs Minister, and how he mentioned that the end of competition amongst the municipalities in Alberta is at an end. And certainly, the words that was there, the rhetoric was there, and we just hope that they'll follow it up with concrete action, and we hope to see some in the budget, and as well as when the MGA is released in the spring, seeing some positive steps being made there. Also, wanted to highlight, on the 30th, I was, the mayor and I were able to attend a workshop called Leading Change, put on by Pace and Odyssey House, and talked about gender roles and how to end sexual harassment and sexual violence, and what roles that we can play in that, in changing some of the negative stereotypes surrounding gender roles, and you know, a number of other practical steps that can be done to really affect the culture and take a leading role in, you know, some of the words we say and some of the actions we take, and to improve that situation there. So certainly, it was a, you know, fantastic, fantastic presentation by the presenters there, and you know, I encourage fellow councillors, if you get a chance in the future, to take the course or to look at the highlights, definitely worth it.
Thanks, Counselor Tarrant. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Keep it brief tonight, given where we're at in the meeting. I just want to highlight, as my deputy mayor stint is coming to close, I'll just mention the three other events I went to. Peace Library System Annual Rural Libraries Conference, I brought greetings. Alberta Cultural Days Kickoff, I brought greetings. And the Red Cross Society Volunteers Appreciation, I brought greetings. Thanks to Councillors O'Toole and McLean and Clayton for joining me at that event. Also, want to thank city for, again, hosting, city staff for organizing and hosting the City United Way Chili Lunch. Good to meet everybody and see everybody again, and support a very worthwhile cause, being the United Way. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Well, it sounds like just about everything's been covered, but there were actually a couple of events that I attended that others did not. On Sunday, the 27th, I was in Musquessee Park to bring council's greetings and warmest wishes to the Tiny Hands of Hope Walk to Remember. Very significant event in our community for a number of families, many, many families from Grand Prairie and from across the region, as they remember and recognize those dealing with loss of a child or an infant. On this Sunday, in the morning, I was again at Musquesee, sorry, actually, in the morning, I was at Musquesee Park, yes, for the CIBC Run for the Cure for the Canadian Breast Cancer Foundation, and it was great to see so many people. They had over 300 people registered this year, and everyone is out there in minus-two weather, happy and ready to run. But it was great to see that this event has actually grown into a full-fledged and official CIBC Run for the Cure. For a number of years, it was an unofficial event, and so it's grown to the size where it's sort of has been officially adopted, and that's great, and I think a testament to the organizers. And then later Sunday afternoon, I was at GPRC to take part in the Sisters in Spirit Vigil and Walk. This is an event to recognize and help, help the healing, and also help the recognition of the issue of missing and murdered Aboriginal women. And was pleased to take part in that on behalf of city council, and bring greetings and warmest wishes to that event as well. And with that, I think, given the length of our meeting tonight, we'll call it adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.